We are ready, except for those two. Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. I would now like to call the February 28th, 2023 Longmont City Council Regular Session to Order. If you are viewing this livestream at home, you can watch it on the city's YouTube channel, longmontpublicmedia.org/Watch, or on Comcast Channels 8 or 880. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Peck.
President.
Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Waters.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder to the public, anyone wishing to speak at first call public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have the opportunity to speak during the final call, public invited to be heard. Anyone wishing to speak on second reading or public hearing items are asked to add their name to the speaker list for each particular item. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and we would like you to please state your name and address. There are no minutes to approve tonight and no agenda revisions. Are there any motions to direct the city manager to add agenda items to future agendas from council members? Nope. Seeing none, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Report, Mayor, Council.
Okay, thank you. No special reports tonight, so we're going right on to the first call public invited to be heard. The first one is Kim Edrison. She's not here. All right, Doe.
Yay. You can hear me, I'm sure, right? Good evening. Oh, I'm Doe Kelly. First things first, I'm Doe Kelly. I live on Barbary Drive. I've been here many times. Good evening, you guys. City Council Mayor Peck, I'm here to talk about smart meters. Again, here are some titles and quotes from a variety of articles I found online, some of them from RFK Jr.'s Children's Health Defense website. Quote, "Doctor blasts smart meters and tells the public, 'We should be demanding electromechanical analog meters and utilities should be providing them.'" And, quote, "Don't want a smart meter? Take it up with your state legislatures," says Scott McCullough, a lead litigator for Children's Health Defense. And I guess we're just gonna have to go to Denver for that and write our own legislature, legislation. And might I add, McCullough is the lead attorney who successfully prosecuted the case against the FCC for its antiquated radio frequency guidelines that a year and a half later have never been updated, leaving us to wonder if any wireless device is in fact safe, according to the updated science of wireless harms, which has not yet been factored into any reassessment of the FCC RF guidelines. Your federal government not at work for you. Now, back to state legislatures. In January, Massachusetts became the latest state to introduce smart meter legislation with a bill that would require the state's utility companies to obtain written consent from consumers before installing a smart meter. The bill also would eliminate fees for consumers who want to opt out of smart meters. Here's a quote coming from senior scientists in an article entitled, "It's Time to Invoke the Precautionary Principle for Radio Frequency: Why Don't the Tenets of Toxicology Apply?" From the February 28th Microwave News, quote, "The precautionary principle should be applied to public exposures to RF radiation." So say four senior academic scientists, including the former director of the U.S. National Toxicology Program, the NTP, in a strongly worded appeal. Writing in the peer-reviewed journal Environmental Research, Paul Ben Ishai, Linda Bernbaum, Dever Davis, and Hugh Taylor point to a plethora of both experimental and epidemiological evidence establishing a causal relationship between EMF and cancer and other adverse health effects. Now, on to the more practical nuts and bolts and carbon footprints that the city hopes to reshape by the use of smart meters. I am asking you, on behalf of the public, for the unbiased evidence that this is actually working and working well somewhere else, show me where the CO2 footprint has been affected. Where are the savings for we, the people? Show me the evidence this actually works somewhere, anywhere. Show me the unbiased, independently derived evidence that this will save me money. I have it on expert authority. Nobody is saving money. Or carbon, once the smart meters go in. Au contraire. Thank you. Stop the smart meter rollout now, please.
Kendra Pirsche. Kendra's not here, I'm assuming. Corket Onoran.
Hello. Corket Onoran, 800 Emery Street, 80501. I'm here to express my support for the Center for Arts and Entertainment Initiative. I also support city's decision to conduct a survey on the current use of certain facilities and support for potential investment of these facilities. I took the survey myself, and it asks what facilities I currently use and investment on what facilities I would support. It's a good idea to have this information. However, in my opinion, the survey emphasizes the potential use and de-emphasizes the question of, is it good for the community? And those are different questions. Let me give you an example. I teach as an adjunct in the University of Colorado, Denver, and I have access to university's library system. So I don't use Longmont Public Library, but I would support any investment to make the library better because I believe it is good for the community. Longmont deserves a good library system. I encourage you to approach with the same question to Center of Arts and Entertainment. Is it good for the community? And instead of who would use it, we should ask, how can we make it more inclusive? How can we make the center attract people from all ages and backgrounds? I want to end with a famous quote by the poet William Carlos Williams. This is what he said, "It is difficult to get news from poems, yet people die miserably every day for lack of what is found there." We are all humans. We need poetry and arts in our lives. We need arts to bring us together. Thank you.
Thank you, Corket. Lance Whitaker.
Mayor and Council, my name is Lance Whitaker in support of House Bill 191230 again. I'd like to remind you that when the federal government in 2008 and 09 begged me to buy a house, where else would I have bought a house but here in Longmont? Now that the state is basically begging me to stop burning out of my garage with grant money and loan money, where else would I want to put my business but here in Longmont? So, again, I'm here in support of House Bill 1230. And also, as you well know, today is National Be Heard Day. Each year, in the 7th day of March, National Be Heard Day encourages small businesses across the country to make their presence known. The day recognizes over 145 million small businesses striving to be heard over the big business-dominated noise. National Be Heard Day around the United States, small business employ approximately 40% of the workforce. Standing out amongst the crowd can be a daunting task. But small businesses are unique in many ways. Not only do they supply cutting-edge services and products, but they also reinvest in small-town America, local neighborhoods in many ways. When small business owners live, work, and play in our communities, their dollars stay and grow. Many of these small businesses create small products, solving unique problems for businesses. Not only that, they support schools in dollars as mentors in classrooms and in field coaches. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance. Ethan? And am I pronouncing this correctly? Is it An- Angrin? Okay, close.
Ethan Agreen, 930 Budson Rec. Greetings, council members. Planting 30,000 trees in Longmont would represent a 2.6% increase in total tree canopy and sequester 330 tons of carbon and 10 tons of ozone every year in perpetuity. My credential to speak on this topic includes earning a master's degree in environmental leadership and experience in sustainable food systems and ecological design practice of permaculture. Today, we win the Seattle Virtual Signaling Greenwashing Exercise of the release of the city's annual Sustainability and Climate Action Report to highlight, quote, "Longmont steps toward a carbon-free future." Never mind that we are carbon-based life forms, and in fact, all known life on Earth is carbon-based. We take going carbon-free literally, it means genocide. Of course, we don't take it literally, and that is where we begin to see through the veneer of the climate emergency industrial complex. In 2019, council adopted Climate Emergency Declaration that included lots of fluff, yet only one concrete action, formation of a, quote, "Climate Working Group to discuss and implement steps to promote a carbon-free, sustainable city with a goal of creating and submitting quarterly reports." However, the Now Defund Climate Action Task Force has not met since 2020, and the city has never received a quarterly report. I'm not here to speculate on why you killed the task force, but by killing the task force, you crippled its most important function. It includes some independent subject matter experts and concerned residents, including those most vulnerable to the impacts of climate change and the climate discussion. You then shift your responsibility to the Sustainability Advisory Board, a board more easily controlled by special interests and compliant with your approved agenda. Building up electrification is big money for your crony special interests, I get it, but it comes at the obvious expense of ordinary residents paying higher prices for electricity. Planting trees, on the other hand, is big impact, low cost. Planting 30,000 trees in Longmont by 2030 would sequester 330 tons of carbon every year while improving air quality and mitigating extreme summer heat for our most vulnerable residents. How many trees did Longmont plant last year? Only 226, a small fraction of the number we should be planting to address a real climate emergency. Today, I'm calling out the city for being out of compliance with the simple terms of the Climate Emergency Declaration. This is unacceptable, and I demand change. If you no longer believe there is a real climate emergency after getting the Climate Action Task Force, then we send the Emergency Declaration. Otherwise, the task force must be reconstituted, or the Emergency Declaration must be amended to accurately reflect the city's current actual climate agenda. In conclusion, please come back to reality. Focus on climate resilience, not going carbon-free. Or in the chilling words of one council member, societal upheaval comparable to the Industrial Revolution. No one appreciates unnecessary societal upheaval. IRG disport the tree equity, climate action vision I am proposing to plant 30,000 trees by 2030. Let ecological wisdom finally prevail over irrational climate alarmism.
Thank you, Ethan. Elsie Wilkins.
Good evening. I'm Elsie Wilkins, and I live at 8664 Middle Fork Road, Boulder County. I have three questions. The smart meters bypass the fuse box. Do you have engineer reports that confirm that the smart meters that are being installed in our communities do not have the fire risk that they have had in other places, California and other countries, Canada? My second question is, the Longmont city has contracted with a smart meter company that has a history of fire incidents. Have the risk been eliminated, and how have they been eliminated? And number three, the smart meters being installed in Longmont don't have a track record of saving electricity. Is that true? Also, I have a big concern about the pollinators, specifically the bees. So I have a question also. So what a picnic will be without bees? Honeybees are critical to U.S. food supplies. One-third of the foods we eat are pollinated by honeybees, especially the good stuff, our superfoods rich in vitamins and nutrients. They are the tiny forces behind more than 20 billion worth of U.S. crops every year. So a picnic without bees will be, if we do have kebabs, the kebabs will not have onions, peppers, tomatoes. If we have blackberry pie, hold the berries. If we have sandwich of peanut butter and jelly, hold the jelly. If we have lemonade, there won't be lemons for the lemonade. If we have watermelon in the picnic, there won't be watermelon. There won't be guacamole or salsa for the chips. If we have a salad, there will be no tomatoes, no cucumbers, no onions, no olives. If we have a fruit salad, there will be pineapple and bananas only. And if we have a pasta salad, there will be no broccoli, no olives, no onions, no peppers, no tomatoes. So I am concerned about what is going to be the impact on the pollinators with the rollout of more 5G towers and more smart meters and all type of equipment that affect our pollinators. Thank you.
Elsie, would you mind giving your email address and contact information to Sandy Cedar? Thank you. Steve Altshuler.
Good evening. I get to try to do this without glasses, so bear with me. My name is Steve Altshuler. I live at 1555 Taylor Drive. I have a rhetorical question. Why do people move to Longmont? I moved here 16 years ago for good schools for my daughter, open space, and a good location for my window covering business. Longmont prospers from property taxes and business sales tax. All we ask in return is safe streets, good schools, and a few good restaurants. After five years at Blue Mountain Elementary and one year at Altona, I took my daughter out of public school and paid extra for a better, safer education at a Christian school. So I paid two times as much for her schooling because I still had to pay property taxes in Longmont. Now, what can ruin a city? 500,000 people have left California. Instead of opening Tesla in California, they moved to Texas. Lower taxes and more rights for their business and their employees. Thousands of businesses in California have closed due to homeless camped on the sidewalks and human waste and needles in front of their stores. I see it happening in Denver, it's happening in Boulder, and the way we're going, it's gonna start happening in Longmont more, too. $5 million a day to house illegals in hotels at up to $500 a day in New York. This is taxpayer money at waste. People are leaving Portland due to crime. Chicago is the number two capital of America. Liberal policies have never helped the city grow and prosper. Sadly, Chicago is replacing Lori Lightfoot with another liberal. I fear this will be like rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic. Please focus your decisions on helping Longmont prosper. Do not just take from those who work to give to those who are too lazy to work. My business moved to Weld County, and my daughter is in school in Loveland. A lot of these policies have chased my business away and will chase other people away. And I have 49 seconds. You know, inflation is a really big deal here. It's a big deal in America. And when you look at, a couple weeks ago, you had a lady out here that was in, well, they talk about bathrooms now, where you have a third set of bathrooms for the people that can't decide what gender they are. If you take a 3,000-square-foot restaurant with 400 square feet of bathrooms, now it's 600 square feet of bathrooms because they need a third set of everything. That means there's 10% less space for tables, at least one less employee. And if there's less space for tables and less customers, the businesses have to raise their prices 10% to make the same money they would have made before. So all I'm asking is, when you make the decisions that you make, look at unintended consequences, because a lot of these decisions are increasing inflation and other changes in our life. Thank you.
Strider Binstone.
Hey, Strider Binstone, 951 17th. While I was preparing to come down here tonight, something hit me. I just discovered that the $200 cash I paid to my utility bill did not go through. For some reason, it was cash. And I can't find my receipt, so they say they're gonna cut off my electricity tomorrow or the next day. I wonder if there's some way I can get another week to try to find what happened. I paid it cash, and she stamped it and handed it back to me, but I can't get any help in all of the sorting and things I need to do at home, so it's pretty severe. The, I came down, I saw the climate action thing was going on, and I saw in the newspaper, there was criticism of the report not having been dealt with, but it takes a while, you know, regulations, meetings, committees, plans, whatever. I remember the climate conference we had here when I first moved here. I think it was, what, '07 or '08? I'm not sure what year. Hunter Lovins was speaker. We really had something going, but then we had a reactionary city council that kind of abolished everything. Today is the 58th anniversary of Bloody Sunday in Selma. I got knocked out twice over the bridge before I was able to get up and run through the horse charge to get back into town alive. And Michael Belmont found finally a copy. It took me 55 years to get a copy of Ramparts Magazine, June of '65. It's the best contemporaneous report that ever happened about Selma, and it's got three pages of my testimony that day. I was still in shock. I only had a broken nose, no broken bones, but it was, we thought we won the right to vote in this country. The Supreme Court has been destroying that nationally with Citizens United and Shelby County and whatever, actively destroying the right to vote. And now we got the right to vote. And now we got eight or ten states that are, it's the state trying to destroy the right to vote. And there are many things about a government or a democracy, but fundamental is the right to vote and the right to speak and a free press. If you don't have the right to vote, you have no other rights. And that is what we're facing at juggernaut right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Strider. And talk to our assistant city manager there. Right here, Strider. I saw two people come in. Is Kendra here? Kendra Pearsall? Kim Edmondson?
Hello, I'm Kim Edmondson on Bittersweet Lane here in Longmont. I'm here once again to oppose your smart meter rollout. I've looked at all of your city website on the meters and no places or any mention at all of the potential health impacts such as dizziness, ear pain, memory loss, heart palpitations, anxiety, insomnia, depression, hormonal disruption, chronic inflammation, Laura metabolism, the platea mitochondria, or the long-term effects such as increased cancer risk, damage to nervous system, decreased reproductive abilities. Shouldn't this information be presented to the citizens in advance so they can decide what risks they are willing to take with their health and the health of their family? This should be an opt-in and not an opt-out and be penalized for opting out. Due to the fact there are potential health risks, people should be informed of those risks in advance. If they choose to go forward, then opt in for those meters. Instead, you're being charged a monthly fee for not playing along and having your current meter replaced with a non-EMI meter, which turns out, according to a local building biologist, emits more EMF radiation than the EMI smart meters, yet again being punished for using. To play along, how shameful is that? I'm also going to ask that you end the climate emergency that was declared in twenty-eighteen and put a pause on all this sustainable energy hoopla that, as far as I can tell, is designed to financially drain the average citizen and serve as a digital wireless prison system for humanity. I recently sent you information to review regarding the topic of geoengineering known as weather modification technology. I think that is the real climate crisis, not my gasoline-run vehicles or gas stoves, which do not cause asthma. Childhood vaccines do that. You should be demanding they stop spraying it damn skies daily. It's so obvious. I don't know how you don't see it. If you follow the sustainability money trail, it all goes right back to the corporations that are trying to run the planet, who are owned by the maniacs who fly their private jets to Davos, Switzerland, to figure out how, well, we own nothing, be happy and eat the bugs, which, by the way, the parasites are caused by eating insects, which has made a cause of cancer that the Rockefeller-run medical schools have covered up to make more money off our chronically ill behinds. Mayor Peck, your League of Mayor organization, is promoting this sustainable garbage in a public-private partnership with people like Pfizer and other mega corporations whose heads turn up in Davos, Switzerland. The Sustainability Liaison, Lisa Knoblock, who is on the Board for Colorado Communities for Climate Action, her group follows the lead of the Rocky Mountain Institute, which operated last year on forty-two million dollars this past year, which used to be known as the Carbon War Room, founded by Sir Richard Branson, yet another rich globalist trying to tell us how to live our lives. And we have the Biden regime and their recent one-point-two-trillion-dollar Inflation Reduction Act of the seventy-three million for grid modernization, Colorado got zero dollars. But we did get four hundred thirty-two million for infrastructure development of airports. Don't airplanes make huge carbon footprints? Why are we investing in that? We're all paying for that one-point-two-trillion in the form of inflation. How is that helping the low income that you pretend to care so greatly about? How is this equitable?
Thank you. Okay, we are now at the consent agenda and introduction reading by title of first reading ordinances. Can you please read the ordinances into the record for me?
Yes. Item nine A one is an ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash ten, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter fifteen point oh-two, section fifteen point oh-two dot oh-eight-zero dot B of the Longmont Municipal Code on Administrative Modifications. Item nine A two is ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash eleven, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter fifteen point five, section fifteen point oh-five, point one-two oh of the Longmont Municipal Code on Mixed Use and Non-Residential Design Standards. Item B is ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twelve, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance Brand Municipal Airport Hanger Parcel H dash one A to Warren K. Remple. Item C is ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash one-three, an ordinance for, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance Brand Municipal Airport Hanger Parcel eleven, I'm sorry, H dash one-one to Longmont Executive Hangars Two Association Incorporated. Item D is resolution twenty-twenty-three dash one-eight, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the twenty-twenty-three award notice under the intergovernmental agreement between Boulder County and the city of Longmont for Environmental Sustainability Matching Grant Program.
Thank you. Do any councillors want to pull any items off of this agenda? Well, I do. I am going to pull A one. So can I have a motion? Well, I will move the consent agenda minus A one. So it's been moved and seconded to, for the consent agenda minus A one. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Since we have no ordinances on second reading and public hearings tonight, we'll go right back to the items pulled from the consent agenda. And I do have a couple of questions. Let me close out this voting. Hello? No, I thought you were.
Not quite.
Not quite.
Good evening.
Good evening. I just have a couple of clarification questions. It is mentioned in here several places where a wall plane is used. What is a wall plane in a design standard?
So, Mayor, wall plane would refer to kind of the vertical wall of a building facade. And so typically, in terms of architectural design, it references kind of variation in that wall plane. So you get a little bit more of a variety in terms of architectural features related to building design. So, again, the wall plane is kind of the horizontal surface of a building facade.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Vertical. Sorry.
Yeah, I knew you meant vertical. That's what happens when you almost retire.
That's right.
Also mentioned several times in the ordinance is the word director. It says whatever the director wants. What director are you referring to?
So by code, it references the planning director.
The planning director.
Yeah, planning services development director.
Okay. And also, under the site design, why aren't we making the gathering places a part of this design instead of saying that they are appropriate per the site design?
So, I mean, it can vary. I mean, there are certainly instances where we would want to have gathering spaces in a, for example, an industrial development. But there are other instances where an industrial development may not warrant the need. And so we left that kind of flexible so we can make a determination on where those types of gathering spaces might be appropriate within an industrial development. Sometimes if you have a lot of truck traffic moving in and out of an industrial development, and it makes it kind of difficult to try to create gathering spaces for, you know, for visitors and/or employees. But to the maximum extent, we would like to encourage that those be incorporated into designs, if at all possible.
What about residential? Is it the same? Did I see the same wording in the residential one? I'm not sure.
No, this, I mean, this is focusing primarily on, the changes are primarily focusing on kind of industrial building design.
Okay.
We're still utilizing gathering spaces, amenity spaces for mixed-use developments, other non-residential developments and residential developments.
Okay, as long as we're continuing to look at that.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And that was the end, those were my questions. So I moved that we approve twenty-twenty-three dash ten, which is A one. So it's been moved by myself, seconded by councillor Martin. I do, I'm sorry, I do see councillor Waters.
Thanks, Mayor Peck. I wouldn't have pulled this off. I might have just called and asked the question, but since it was pulled off, in the council communication, there's a reference to the use of the word flexibility. And the first conversation I was in when it came to zoning and code was when Brian Ewen and Aaron were, I'd sat up there, listened to a couple of presentations about a pretty substantial update of the land code and, you know, to align it with Envision Longmont. And if I heard the word flexibility once, I heard it, I don't know how many times, many times during those presentations. And then I got a chance to vote on it. You know, by the time it was finished, I was elected, which I thought made sense. For me, you know, my biggest interest was to hear you and Aaron and others talk about what the, you know, what the big picture was, kind of the vision from a planner's perspective for the city and how that was reflected in the code, right? But the notion of flexibility resonated with me. And since then, there's only one time that I recall, an item came to us that was an appeal from planning and zoning, that the staff recommended approval of a project that planning and zoning didn't approve. And then it was appealed by the applicant. And we had a chance to hear it. And I don't recall if you were, if you made the presentation, and it doesn't really matter, but that was an occasion where the staff was bringing a lot of recommendation, both to PNC and to us, to exercise that flexibility because of the specifics around this particular proposal or application. And that one is not what I'm so curious about. I'm just wondering, have been there others, I don't know if this maybe Glenn's been in these conversations, have there been other projects where you've either needed the flexibility and didn't have it or times where you had the flexibility and used it in ways that were consistent with what the kind of the intentions were with the proposals or the recommendations you brought back in two thousand and eighteen? Because that's a long question, but you get.
No, that's, that's a parent council member Waters. Yeah, I mean, I think there's been a variety of different instances, both from the standpoint of applications that might be considered administrative, where staff has more discretion to make determinations. And I think, you know, from that standpoint, it's been helpful for staff to have the flexibility. And as you've probably noticed in this particular ordinance, there's some additional flexibility built in for alternative design compliance.
Some permissive language that, yeah.
And so I think from that standpoint, that's been helpful. And I think the developers have appreciated that well, as well as we've gone through the development review process in terms of, you know, they always have concerns about how long, you know, they're in the development review process and getting their entitlements in a timely fashion. And I think the flexibility, as long as the requests are reasonable and the design, you know, they still are proposing a good design, that the ability to have that flexibility helps staff to be able to make those determinations on whether or not to approve the request for a modification or not. And have that ability to approve that, obviously facilitates the ability to move projects through the process quicker. I think the same can apply for, you know, whether staff can make a determination on whether or not something needs to go up through a hearing process or not. And having that flexibility, again, helps staff in terms of being able to make reasonable determinations without the, you know, without the rigidity of having to send it up through a hearing process, if it makes sense to approve a modification.
Yeah, it just, it made sense then. We just haven't been in those conversations because it plays out at a different level, right? It's your judgment or it's Glenn's judgment. But we just haven't seen those. So it's good to know that all that work that was done back in two thousand and seventeen and eighteen that resulted in that, you know, in the major land code update, translated into options that has created efficiencies and whatnot. Because the only one we're in since didn't seem to play out that way. So it's good to know.
And one thing else that I'll add is that, you know, prior to the code update in two thousand and eighteen, and I was staff liaison and continue to be staff liaison for the Board of Adjustment for variances, prior to two thousand and eighteen code, we had, you know, we'd have regular variance requests that went before the Board of Adjustment. I would say since the code has been adopted and we have additional flexibility and we've updated our standards, it's pretty rare that we have those variance requests go into the Board of Adjustment. So from that standpoint, I think that's been helpful.
Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to make a statement as well that when I ask questions up here, it is also, even if I know the answer, it is for the residents and the people watching at home. So if they have questions, they are answered in public. It doesn't matter whether another councillor thinks it's an appropriate question or not. We do have the right to ask staff questions for clarification. So thank you very much. That was great.
Thank you all.
Councillor Martin?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Peck. Yes. Quick question. It's kind of a follow-on for councillor member Waters' question, line of questioning, which is, I think it's admirable that the staff is using, you know, incorporating more flexibility into our design codes. And especially since, I think, as pretty much the whole planning staff acknowledges, we are in a period of transition in terms of our expectations about what building in Longmont needs to be to meet the needs of the city. The Planning and Zoning Board, on the other hand, tends to be selected based on their willingness to adhere to every jot and tittle of the code, which I think is probably what happens in the example that Dr. Waters cited. So the staff had been flexible, planning and zoning was less flexible. It came to us, and we voted with planning and zoning because we did not incorporate the idea of flexibility into our application of the code. Do you have any advice for us when that happens? Because, you know, we're not as experienced as you are in terms of understanding the consequences of a variation. And the same is, you know, we're also not as experienced as the Planning and Zoning Board. This seems to create a puzzle for us, which I think, I'd just like your advice.
Well, it's a great question, councillor Martin. I think in that particular instance, when the council reviewed that particular item in an appeal, you know, the standards that we have and criteria we have for appeals of decisions by the Planning and Zoning Commission is fairly limited. And, you know, basically, council needs to make a finding that the Planning and Zoning Commission erred in their decision. And that's kind of a difficult criteria to kind of, you know, get across that hurdle. It's not like it's a de novo review of a request for an appeal on a particular item. So I'm not sure if I have great advice on that because, like I said, once it gets to council's purview on an appeal, your determination is fairly limited on, you know, how you can make that call of whether or not the planning commission made an error in their decision.
So everybody did the right thing and we still didn't get the thing we really wanted?
So I, thank you. We're really off topic at this point. We need to vote on this motion. And we are, we are very limited on appeals. Thank you for that. And let's vote on this.
Councillor Martin?
Yeah. Yeah. I made the motion to move A one, and councillor Martin seconded. Yeah. I made the motion to move A1 and Counselor Martin seconded that. So let's vote. We are now at our general business and we're going to have a report, an annual report from the Sustainability and Climate Action. Oh, I'm sorry, the motion carried. Thank you.
Can I close this? I'm not sure if it was up for any particular reason. Thank you. Here we go. Good evening, Mayor Peck and members of council. Lisa Knoblock, Sustainability Manager with Strategic Integration. And I'm here tonight to share with you the 2022 annual report and the progress that we've been making toward our sustainability and climate action goals. All right. Am I lost? Okay, here we go. So I'm just going to do a pretty brief overview of the Sustainability Plan and Climate Action Recommendations Report, just because I know we have some new council members that may not be as familiar with them. We'll go through the annual report and some highlights of the work that has been underway there and how we're doing in terms of meeting our targets and goals. We'll review the recently completed 2021 greenhouse gas inventory and have some time to discuss updating the greenhouse, the existing greenhouse gas reduction targets. So the Sustainability Plan was approved in 2016. It had, contains these 10 topic areas listed here. And each topic area has an objective, targets, strategies, and timelines associated with each of those. Those all also support the guiding principles and goals within Envision Longmont, the city's comprehensive plan. And then in 2022, the Climate Action Task Force in the Just Transition Plan Committee developed recommendations that became the Climate Action Recommendations Report that had recommendations within these six topic areas with the underlying foundation of equity. A lot of that work overlaps with the work within the Sustainability Plan, and that was approved by council in 2020. So in your packet, you received the 2022 annual report. This is our second annual report that we've done. It encapsulates all of the progress towards sustainability, the Sustainability Plan and the Climate Action Recommendations Report. I'm not going to go through every page of that report. I'm just going to pull out some highlights and do a deeper dive in particular on the climate action work. I do want to highlight that we have an update underway to the indicators platform. So there's been Longmont indicators for a while that showed progress towards the, the targets for sustainability and envision. We're revamping that. It'll be a much more dynamic and interactive dashboard, so keep an eye out for that. It should be up in April. And then before I dive into the details, I just want to highlight these two data points noted here because I think it's a good synopsis of the work underway and our progress. So 91% of the immediate, near-term, or ongoing Sustainability Plan and Climate Action recommendations are on track for implementation. And 71% of all the targets have either, that have either been met or aren't on track or relevant strategies haven't been implemented yet, which essentially means that they're associated with recommendations that are set in the midterm. So we haven't begun implementation of those yet. And the ones that aren't on track, you'll see in the report, some asterisks indicated some of the challenges that we faced from the impacts of COVID on program participation, some of the supply chain issues that we've seen and stuff like that. Just to review kind of the formatting, I know this is a lot of information. I'm not going to go everything, through everything here. But the report shows each of those 10 topic areas, as well as the additional topic areas from the Climate Action Recommendations Report. On the left-hand side is a narrative that just pulls out some of the highlights that we thought were important to share with council and the community. And on the right-hand side, you'll see what we call the action snapshots that goes through each of those topic areas, all of the targets, the most recent data that we have available, most of which is 2022. But some of those data sources we don't get every year or that we get later in the year. So we don't have data for them as yet. And then a symbol with a thumbs up, thumb side, or thumbs down that indicates how well we're meeting those targets. Digging a little bit deeper into the Climate Action Recommendations in particular, this slide shows all of the, the recommendations from the Climate Action Task Force. On the left, you see the near-term recommendations that were set to be implemented in the 2021 and 2022 timeframe. And those green stars there indicate all of the recommendations where we have work underway. You'll see all, the majority of the recommendations are underway, except for some education and outreach recommendations, which is largely, the delays for that, those are largely due to just staff turnover that we had last year. And then on the right, you see the midterm recommendations, which are set to be implemented in 2023, 2023 to 2027 timeframe. So we're just starting to get some of those underway. You'll see that some of them, there's progress already. But we'll be looking at those in the coming years to help us keep on track to meeting our goals. And then there were a handful of recommendations that were identified as monitor over time that just had some complicating factors to them that we just wanted to keep an eye on before we move forward to implementation. The colors got pretty washed out on that one. But I also wanted to highlight that in addition to the recommendations from the Climate Action Task Force, we have equity-focused recommendations that were developed from the Just Transition Plan Committee that were specifically focused on how to incorporate equity into climate action. Those fell into these two overarching buckets, which were equity assessment. So there's recommendations focused on capacity building. So make sure we have a foundation on what equity and climate action means. Applying an, excuse me, applying an equity lens and engaging frontline communities. And then a series of recommendations focused on equitable climate action. So things that we should be taking into consideration when we're implementing any of our climate action work. And all of these recommendations are getting adapted into an equity checklist and discussion guide that, that staff continues to utilize as we implement all of the different climate action recommendations. So as far as our overarching climate action goals, I want to revisit the, these because I know some of these are new to some of you. So in 2018, we did the city's first greenhouse gas inventory to understand what are the sources of our greenhouse gas emissions. And we developed a report that identified a number of recommendations that would help Longmont reduce those greenhouse gas emissions. We then took all of those recommendations and had them modeled into the future, into 2050, to understand what the potential reduction to our greenhouse gas emissions could be. And that's where we came up with these numbers of reducing our emissions 66% by 2030 and 69% by 2050. And just a couple of key pieces of information here. First of all, this is, under ideal conditions, if we could put all of these recommendations into place, this is what we could potentially see as far as an impact to our emissions of reductions. And then as I, I want to note, there's not a big drop from 2030 to 2050. That is largely because of our 100% renewable by 2030 goal. So you can see that that really by and far has the biggest impact in reducing our emissions. So that's why you see the big drop in 2030 and then not as big of a drop to 2050. So how are we doing in meeting those goals? Now we have three consecutive greenhouse gas inventories, so we have those three yellow dots are our actual emissions from those three years, 2016, 2019, and 2021. And in the 2021 inventory that was just completed, we saw 13% emissions reduction from our 2016 baseline. So we're doing pretty well overall. And that number reflects both our activities that we've been doing, again, largely the transition to 100% renewable energy, as well as our other work in terms of energy efficiency and transportation. It also reflects some just changes in, in methodology in terms of accounting. So as I mentioned, we recently completed the 2021 emissions inventory. This was, we actually bumped this up, up a year because the county was doing their countywide inventory, along with a number of the Boulder County communities. And so it made sense for us to just be part of that process and be aligned with their timeline. We did, of course, have to incorporate the Weld County portion of Longmont so that we weren't just looking at the Boulder County side. So it is a complete inventory for Longmont. As you can see, our three sources, three sources of emissions are still electricity, natural gas, and transportation. A couple of things I just want to call your attention to. This big kind of orange, orangish-red color that you see at the bottom here with the green arrow says additional equity share emissions, which is kind of a complicated thing to understand. But I wanted to include this here because essentially this isn't part of our formal inventory. But this is the emissions that are associated with Longmont's portion as a, as a member, owner, community of Platte River Power Authority. So the dark blue electricity, that's our emissions associated with the energy that we consume in Longmont, that we purchase from Platte River and consume in Longmont. As an owner community, the additional equity shares essentially are proportion of the emissions that Platte River is associated with the energy that Platte River sells on the open market. So it's just acknowledging our responsibility as an owner community there. And then I also want to call attention to this green slice up here, up here that says transboundary aviation. That's essentially our proportion of emissions from DIA that gets allocated to Longmont. So that does get incorporated into our inventory. But obviously, that's something that we don't have a lot of direct control over, so I just want to highlight that as well. Now that we have three consecutive inventories, we can start to see some year-to-year comparisons. So we pulled out a couple of things that we know council is particular, particularly interested in to highlight. So you'll see total stationary energy. That's essentially the energy that's used in buildings through electricity and natural gas. You can see there was a bump from 2016 and then a drop into 2021. Total transportation has kind of bumped around a bit. This is one of the areas where the data methodology has changed somewhat, which makes it a little bit challenging for us to track, but hopefully gets us closer and closer to more accurate accounting. There's been a bit of a bump in the waste section. But you can see when all of that rolls up into total emissions, that overall decline, which is where we're seeing that overall 13% reduction from our 2016 baseline. So I'm going to get into those three priority sources. So electricity, natural gas, and transportation. Talk about how we're doing as far as our targets there and the work underway. So in, in the electricity section, we have our overarching emissions goal. As I mentioned, we've reduced 13% by 20, or 13% by our 2016 baseline. And we have two supporting targets that help us meet that goal, one of which is an energy, electric energy savings through efficiency measures. We didn't meet that target in 2022, largely as a result of, as I mentioned, continued impacts to program participation as some of the lingering effects of COVID. And also starting to see a lot more significant supply chain issues that impacted the materials associated with efficiency. And then are increasing our renewable energy mix. I want to highlight, first of all, the importance of energy efficiency in helping us to meet our 100% renewable goal. Because obviously, everything that we can save through efficiency is power that we don't have to generate in the first place. So that's an important component. And then as far as meeting our target to get to that 100% renewable by 2030, we are doing well there. We don't have 2022 numbers yet. I'm sorry, we should have those in the next couple of weeks. So I was hoping to have them for you tonight, but we don't have those quite yet. But looking again at that split from delivered energy, so what's actually delivered to Longmont, we're at about 50% renewable. And when we look at Platte River Power Authority's total portfolio mix, it's about 37% renewable as of 2021. I'm not going to go too much more into the 100% renewable work because my colleague Susan Bartlett from LPC is going to be coming to you on Saturday as part of the retreat and doing a deeper dive into that area in particular. I did want to highlight, I just dropped in the recommendations from the Climate Action Task Force here just to show you that there's the near-term recommendations in the blue and the midterm recommendations in the red there. The green arrows are indicating that there's progress underway. I'm not going to read through all this. It's just showing you that there's a lot of work happening in this space, all of which is rolling up to helping us meet those overarching goals. In the area of natural gas, we have the same overarching target. Our two supporting targets are again, the energy efficiency one, because that's one of our primary measures in addition to building electrification to reduce our emissions from natural gas. And then I also wanted to mention, one of the other targets is really keeping an eye on making sure that our low-income households can afford their utility bills and helping to keep those bills stable through energy efficiency measures. So again, that's really one of our most powerful tools to mitigating utility bill increases, whether they be from rates or helping folks to transition to building electrification. And there's also a lot of other benefits that are really important around in-home health, safety, and comfort associated with efficiency. As you can see, there's a lot of near-term recommendations, work that we have underway in this area. A couple of the yellow arrows just indicate where we've run into some challenges in, in meeting some of our goals and implementing these strategies. And a lot of those challenges are around, again, impacts to program participation and staffing constraints. In the transportation section, we have a specific goal to reduce our emissions in transportation 40% by 2030 and 100% by 2050. As of our 2021 inventory, we've seen a decrease in transportation emissions by 26%, so we're doing pretty well there. And then our two supporting targets are focused on increasing vehicle electrification and then also increasing mode share, so getting people out of cars entirely through biking and walking and rolling and access to transit. So even though our current 2022 numbers for electric vehicles show 1.6%, which is far from our, from our 2030 goal, we're actually seeing some pretty positive trends and we anticipate some exponential growth in that area. So there's a lot of work to be done, but there's a lot happening there as well. And then I just want to highlight that sub-goal in particular to fleet and give Cash and our fleet folks a lot of credit for the work that they're doing there because we are on track to meeting our 2025 fleet goal, which is pretty exciting. We do have a thumbs down for mode share, even though it looks like we're getting pretty close to our 2030 goal, only because we've been seeing a decrease in recent years with regards to mode share, largely likely due to the impacts of COVID on transit ridership. So we do hope to see those things rebound, but we did want it to be reflective of what the trends are that we're seeing. So we'll keep an eye on those things. The recommendations from the Climate Action Task Force are midterm recommendations, but we do have a lot of work underway that's supporting these through the transportation roadmap that was approved in 2021 and some regional work that we're doing on the electric, transportation electrification that's focused on really looking at all of the components that need to be addressed to help folks get into electric vehicles, whether they're personally owned or through car share programs or, or other things like that. And really leveraging regional expertise and trying to look at how we can come together as a region, especially looking at funding opportunities through state and federal funding mechanisms that are coming down specifically focused on transportation electrification. So we're trying to position ourselves well for those funding opportunities. And then some supporting work in the adaptation space, so in adaptation and resilience. We're continuing our work in the climate risk and vulnerability map. And we have two projects that are funded by the 2023 Sustainability Tax Funds, looking specifically at extreme heat resilience. We're continuing the Big Picture Climate Lecture Series in partnership with a museum. And then the focus on commercial and residential composting largely through the update to the Zero Waste Resolution, which you all adopted in fall of last year, and the Universal Recycling Ordinance, which is under development right now. One of the complicating factors I want to mention in this area, because I'm sure you all have heard about it through different sources, is that A1 Organics, which is the regional composting facility, has seen a tremendous amount of contamination in recent years. And they've changed their policies to restrict what can go into the composting stream to only be yard waste and food waste. So no more compostable paper, like paper towels, napkins, and coffee filters, or compostable to-goware and whatnot. So that does have somewhat of an impact on our waste diversion goals and around the avoided greenhouse gas emissions that we benefit from putting things into composting. However, we're, we're hoping that that's a pretty short-term situation and then that, and that'll be resolved and hopefully doesn't impact our goals in the long term. But please feel free to reach out with questions if you are, are getting questions from constituents and whatnot on that particular issue. Just a quick mention on equity and climate action. So the equitable climate action team is continuing their work, as I mentioned earlier, from those recommendations from the Climate Action Recommendations Report. They provided feedback to staff on six city projects last year, including the beneficial building electrification plan. That's another thing that Susan Bartlett will be bringing to you on Saturday for much more in-depth discussion. They volunteered at 12 events. And as I mentioned, staff is continuing to adapt those recommendations into tools that we can use internally to ensure that we're incorporating equity into climate action. Some other supporting events, we continue work on the Sustainable Business Program. We had some staff turnover last year as well, but we hired a new bilingual business sustainability coordinator who started in August. And the majority of his work is focused on the Sustainable Business Program. We're excited to have him. I wanted to highlight a pretty good, a high increase in the. I wanted to highlight a pretty good, a high increase in the volunteers for the Parks, Open Space, and Trails Volunteer Program and the tremendous value that that brings to our community. And then we are at about 42% of Longmont schools participating in the Green Star Schools Program. We also put some funding in 2023 from the Sustainability Tax toward this program as well, which puts us on track to have 100% of Longmont schools participating in that program by the end of 2025. And all of this work gets rolled up into our CDP reporting. CDP stands for Carbon Disclosure Project, which is kind of a dry term, but it is the global disclosure platform for all municipalities, cities, states, regions, as well as companies and investors that are doing climate action work, both in mitigation, so reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and adaptation, so adapting to the impacts of climate change. It's a very robust framework that evaluates a number of different things in this area and then arrives at a score for each reporting entity. In 2022, 1,000 cities received a score, only 122 cities globally received an A, only two in Colorado, of which Longmont was one. This was only our second year of reporting, so this is a pretty incredible achievement that really highlights all of the work that we're putting into this. I do want to note, one of the changes that's been made, if we want to maintain an A moving forward, and this leads into our following discussion, they changed to require a science-based interim target. We do have that with that 66% by 2030. Essentially that's saying, based on your population, what is your community responsible for in terms of setting a greenhouse gas reduction target based on your population? And based on our calculations, that 66% number meets that requirement. But they do also require a net zero goal by 2050, which we don't yet have. So I just wanted to bring back up this slide and put the question to you all as to whether or not you want to revisit these goals that were adopted in 2018. Again, these were modeled based on the recommendations from the 2018 greenhouse gas reduction, greenhouse gas inventory and report. What they didn't include at that time was anything around building electrification. And so you all recently adopted the beneficial building electrification. And we did, through that process, went through some modeling to see how that would impact these goals into 2030 and 2050. And so you can see when we add those in, that gives that a bit of a bump there. And so the question to council is, do you want to revisit, update these goals to reflect either just the potential impact from beneficial building electrification? I want to note, one piece of this is potential code updates, and so this doesn't incorporate full electrification from all of those code updates, so there could be some additional impacts there. Also, the opportunity, as I mentioned, to adopt a net zero by 2050 goal. And for those of you that aren't familiar with that, it's not necessarily saying getting all the way to zero by 2050, it's essentially saying getting as close as we can and whatever remaining emissions would be offset by renewable energy or other methods. So I do want to highlight that even with building electrification, we do have this gap here to get us to zero in 2050. But I just want to open that conversation to you all to determine whether or not you want to revisit these or leave these at it for now.
Thank you, Lisa, in opening it for discussion, Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck, and thank you, Lisa, for going back to that slide, because that's where I was going to ask you to go anyway during the Q and A period. I am going to advise more modeling and revisiting these goals and trying to get closer to net zero. I like that beneficial building electrification goal and building efficient. I think that there is more that can be done with building efficiency, which is also a big equity goal.
Absolutely.
And I noticed that you don't seem to have any addition in the 2030 to 2050 for increased building envelope efficiencies. Is that correct?
Yes, I might make Francie come up here and speak to that piece. We do actually, I didn't put it in here because it gets complicated. We do actually have a separate graph that specifically shows the value of energy efficiency. It gets sort of washed out when you're looking at the transition to renewable energy and the transition to electrification, so it doesn't really do justice the impact from energy efficiency in particular, but I'm going to hand it to Francie. Do you want to add anything on that? This is where you can really go deep into some of this stuff. Go ahead.
Francie Jaffe, Sustainability Coordinator. So as Lisa mentioned, when we are providing 100% renewable electricity, it kind of doesn't show those energy efficiency benefits as well. But we did do modeling that did show by increasing the energy efficiency over time that helps to offset the increase in electrification from building electrification as well as transportation electrification that makes that more possible. So you don't see as much the impact in the greenhouse gas emissions, and there is benefits on reducing use of natural gas in buildings as well as you're doing the electrification. However, a lot of the strategies that we modeled focused a lot on reducing electricity because of when the strategies were developed, they had a strong focus on what was in the control of Longmont Power and Communications in the city. So it does factor in, but it doesn't show up in a greenhouse gas model, but it does show up if we could share the energy use model over time to kind of highlight those
Okay, I'm not sure I understood that, but I do think, yeah, we could use, yeah, building efficiency is going to still matter, especially considering that we are not going to be at 100% renewable by 2030. So building efficiency, and the building efficiency is going to be really important during that transitional time because heat pumps are going to put a big demand on the grid. So building efficiency is going to be a major thing, and I would hope to see that remodeling get done. We've done some modeling on that, and I don't find the model as informative as it could be. So the other thing is that our transportation transition plan is pretty much incremental and pretty much based around replacement of internal combustion engines with electric vehicles as opposed to transformative goals around public transit. And so I would like to see some modeling about what a more transformative transit plan in the period of 2025 to, say, 2035, along the lines of what Mr. Greenwald has suggested. I'd like to see what that does, because I think it'd get us into the 90s by 2050, which is as close as anybody's going to get. So that's my position on it, and I really like this because it's clear and it shows us where the low-hanging fruits are. So I very much appreciate it, but yeah, I definitely think it's time for some more aggressive modeling. So thanks.
Thank you.
Councilor McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Thank you, Lisa and staff, for a great presentation there. Just kind of circling back to the A1 composting issue, you know, how are we going to educate the community members about what goes into our green Polycarts? Currently, the sticker tells residents what can go in, but it seems like we need to have a new sticker put on all those carts, and that's probably going to take a little bit of time, especially if we have a deadline of April 1st.
Mayor Peck and Councilmember McCoy, I might see if I can tap, Marika. Sorry. You're going to get into the level of detail that I can't quite answer.
But it needs to go on the outside.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You'll have to excuse me, Marika Unger, Citywide Communications Director. Could you please repeat the question?
Oh, okay. My question was, is, you know, on the Polycarts themselves, they have actually a sticker, which really helps people at the time of putting stuff into the cart. I understand that we can send stuff out through City Line and through other sources, and hopefully people read those, but it's the moment you're putting something in when you go, oh, I can't put that in, is what we need to kind of, it seems like maybe there needs to be a new sticker put on the carts.
For the communication plan, yeah. So thank you for the question, I appreciate it. Councilmember McCoy, then Mayor Peck. I was so deep in something just now, I really do apologize. So I think that the answer is always yes on new and different ways to do that. We have been having a lot of conversations with the media and making sure that the information that's been getting out about the A1 changes have been accurate and helpful to the community. But I agree with you, I think there are always opportunities similar to what we did with the plastic bag ordinance, right? We had little tents and stickers and things that went actually on the shop displays so that people could, in the moment, understand what was happening with those changes. So we'd be happy to explore some of the things that we can do on the A1 composting changes with that as well.
Yeah, I just want people to not be surprised when they get ready to put something in. I understand getting kind of weird stuff in because people mow something up, like a tennis shoe is what we heard.
And we've definitely also created in the past those guides for what goes where and how you do that. One of the issues that we have with that is it's hard to attach to the actual bins. So we've been working on a campaign, actually not just for the composting and what goes where, but also for people to know when to put things out, right? So if there's a holiday or something like that, we often see bins that are out for extra days, they get blown over because it's windy, something like that. So we've been working on a campaign that actually addresses a number of those things all at once.
Okay, it's just on the bins when we first got them, and probably some have worn off, had that plastic sort of sticker on it that helped kind of make sure people were actually putting in the right stuff in the right, in the bin, so.
Thank you for the question.
Mayor Peck, could I add one piece to that? You may remember that Solid Waste does have that app as well, the Waste Wizard app, and so we're updating that as well. So as people are looking for their composting information on the Waste app, they'll be able to find it there. Certainly we'll do a campaign push, as Marika just talked about, and we'll double-check about what happened with the stickers.
And just to add on, I know Charlie is working closely with a lot of our regional partners to try to make sure that we're all saying the same things to folks across the region, because everybody's getting hit with this issue.
Thank you, Lisa. That was a great report.
I do want to, Mayor Peck and councilmembers, just come back to this question. Yeah, I'm happy to leave the targets as is for now or follow up with additional modeling if that's helpful, but I do want to get some specific.
Some direction.
Yeah, if you all want to update these targets, again, you can set the aspirational 2050 goal of net zero by 2050, and then we can continue to hone our modeling to really inform those efforts in particular and help us understand that better. Or we can revisit the modeling without setting an adjusted 2050-year aspirational target, and we can leave it as is.
Okay, Council Waters.
Thanks, Mayor Peck. Just, I wasn't going to weigh in until you came back with this question about targets and adjusting. If I look at just the greenhouse gas emission reduction of 13%, that's since 2016, right? 13% over five years, it's averages 2.5, 2.6% annually. To get to 60%, it's going to require more than double that rate, 5.6% or 5.8%. What should this council or future councils be anticipating as recommendations, I assume that are embedded in the recommendations or in the strategies that were laid out by the Climate Action Task Force? Why should anybody be optimistic that we would hit that 60%, 66% reduction goal, given the accelerating rate that's going to have to occur to meet it? What's going to happen for us to more than double the rate of reduction on an average basis year over year? And I realize a lot of that is in the last two years, but what's going to happen in those last two years then that would give you and should give a council reason to be optimistic that we're going to hit that target?
Yeah, Mayor Peck and Councilmember Waters, thank you so much for that question. I'll go back to what I was referring to earlier. So the modeling really looks at all of the recommendations from the greenhouse gas report, the sustainability plan, the climate action plan. Again, it didn't have the beneficial building electrification in there until we added it into this section, and it modeled based on a number of different assumptions, including adoption curves and whatnot, which is where we came up with these initial numbers. That big impact is largely through the transition to 100% renewable energy. So this does assume that we, at least according to as it is right now, that we will hit 100% renewable energy by 2030. We stay up to date, we get annual reports from Platt River on their emission factors, we get modeling information from them as well. We are going to be keeping an eye on the IRP that's coming up, because that will give us that information about how close we're going to be getting to that 100% goal and what's sort of left on us as a community to meet as well. So that's really where that biggest impact comes from, and that drop really comes from assuming that we will figure out how to get to that 100% goal. So I can't say that we have those answers right now, that's what's coming through the IRP process.
So it's really largely dependent upon what happens with PRPA? Didn't we hear from, and maybe I just am misremembering, that Jason Frisbee, when we heard his report a few months ago, his estimate was by 2030, maybe we could get to 92%?
I'm going to have somebody else speak on that piece.
I think that's in the ballpark, and so when you look at that 8% delta, I think that's where that reliability component comes in. And David can help me. As I've talked to Jason in our city managers meeting, it's really then, you know, it may take a few years after that to really move into that last piece.
But it then raises questions about 2030. If that requires 100% renewable by 2030 and we can get to 92%, and the modeling is going to put us somewhere else in the year 2030 in terms of greenhouse gas reductions, yeah?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor Peck and Councilmember Waters, Dave Hornbacher. And yeah, I think you bring up a really good question there. And so as was noted a moment ago, we've got one, two integrated resource plans that will be completed by Platt River Power Authority prior. You also noted in some of the presentations from least to today, there was information about distributed energy resources under the elements. So we're also under the belief and the action here at the City of Longmont that we have a role in getting to that 100% renewable, and that role is sort of a 5% to 10% of the total 100% that we believe that we should be able to modify our electric energy use here by either adding energy or removing energy or placing energy within the system when renewable energy resources are flush, and so that we can draw out on that or have less demand, so a variety of things. So you'll see more information about that coming forward. You'll notice it also in the budgets that we prepare, that we have funding in the electric department for that. And so, you know, our goal still is 100% renewable, and we'll be taking actions here at the city to also help and facilitate that.
Should I put on my calendar, as an observer from the gallery, in the year 2030 would be this council meeting in 2030, where I get a chance to see how close we came?
Absolutely.
Council McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Well, I kind of come from the point of view, if you don't run the race, you can't win the race. And so in this case here, I think we have to probably keep moving in the right direction. And I remember my buddy that I worked on with my, towards my masters and PhD, and he always said, just keep moving forward. And so I think that's what we need to keep doing, is just keep moving forward here. Even if we miss it, at least we're closer than we were before. So do you need a motion?
I think just direction.
Recommendation?
Yeah. So, I guess what we need to do is to see if we want to stick with these goals, or do we want to move them? If, let's give just, I guess, consensus as to whether we think that we should stick with these goals, and if you want to raise them, chime in and just say, "We want to raise them to this," or "I would prefer this," or "I'm good with it." So, my question now is, do we want to stick with the goals that we have given to the One, two, three. One nay. Counselor Waters?
I'm fine.
Mayor Pro Tim. So, all of us except for Counselor Martin, and I will let her speak to that.
So, I'm not sure what you meant by stick with the goals. I mean, I think that, that Councilmember McCoy said we need to raise the bar.
No, I was saying that just stay the course.
Stay the course and keep in the race.
And keep moving forward with what we're doing.
My God.
I'm sorry.
Well, I, I, because, because there are so many, because we are so far from net zero and because we have to make up for some shortfalls that PRPA has predicted, and so I think we need to work harder at that, and I am very surprised, considering that we have a climate emergency declaration in force, that nobody else thinks so.
What goals, what would you like these to be raised to?
I would like to be raised, well, first of all, I would like to be updated, because we do have two promises from PRPA, 92% by 2030, but also to change the arc so that we have more greenhouse gas reductions between now and 2030. So, that, that helps between, with the now, now to 2030 thing. But the other thing is, I think that we should change our models and our funding priorities to be able to increase the reductions from transportation, reductions from beneficial building electrification, and from building efficiency, because, you know, in PRPA's plan, there's always going to be some natural gas backup. I also had a question to ask about the city's production of, of renewable natural gas and whether, how, how that gets inventory. Does that count as essentially a carbon offset that we're doing that, or is that an energy generation thing, or what exactly, how does that work?
Mayor Peck and Councilmember Martin, that is a great question that I might see if, if Francie can answer for me. Otherwise, I'll have to follow up and get back to you on, on that, because I don't recall off the top of my head how that gets incorporated in, into the modeling in particular. Francie, do you know about the RNG, where that falls? Okay. We'll have to follow up with you to, to understand in particular where that shows up in this. I'm sorry.
Okay. Will you have that at the retreat?
Oh, we can have that for you at the retreat.
Okay. I would sure like to understand why the rest of the council does not want to raise the bar anymore, because I bet the staff wants to. So, I'm, you know, I, I don't, I don't support staying the course. I guess that's all I get to say.
So, here's the way I look at it. As we are working on transportation, having meetings with RTD and coming up with a, a plan for intercity transit, we don't know what that, where that is going in the immediate future. We're pushing hard on it. If we can meet this 66% goal before 2030, then I think that we can, if we can estimate that we can do that by some policies and directions that we're going, then I think that we can raise the, the goal at that point. But if we can't move it with everything we're doing, then we need to reassess it, and what, what are we doing and why aren't we moving it faster? But if we, for, you know, for what you have said, and I agree, that we are only a portion of meeting this 2030 goal of 100%. And if we can get to the 66% goal before 2030, I think that's what we, that's what I would like to see. But to say we could get to 100% by 2030, that may not be attainable. And we should always, we should always go for the gold, but I don't want to put it out there so far or so high that it's not attainable. We find that it just isn't attainable. So, I, I, I think with the, with all of the discussions we're having on different areas that we should, we should move, just keep going.
Mayor Peck and councilmembers, thank you so much for your time, and we'll, we'll be back on Saturday to talk more in depth about some of these things as well.
Great. Thank you. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Respectfully, I believe that the mayor and the council have misunderstood the question. I think that there was not a particular amount of discussion about moving the 2030 Ms. Knoblauch talked about, in order to continue to get an A from our climate evaluation, we needed to move our 2050 goal. And so, when I talked about it, I was pointing out the places on the right side of the graph where we can get more con, carbon reductions out of our 20, 2030 to 2050 goals by more transformative beneficial electrification goals and more transformative transit goals, and that gives us plenty of time to get the work done. So, with all due respect, could we not ask the council with that clarification whether they really wish to doom the sustainability organization to falling grades?
First of all, I would like to ask the council, did you misunderstand the question? Did you misunderstand the question, as Counselor Martin has said, about, about keeping the goals where they are or moving them? Repeat it, and let's make, make sure everybody does understand that.
Mayor Peck and councilmembers, so, so the question is whether or not you all want to update the existing targets. My focus was largely on the 2050 target, which is, which currently is 69% reduction, to other incorporate building electrification impacts, which are shown in that dark blue wedge, most of which would happen after 2030, again, with the caveat that we, we don't have code updates as yet to, to plug into particular years, but still, the bulk of that would largely be probably after 2030. So, it would be incorporating the beneficial electrification or moving to an aspirational net zero by 2050 target.
Thank you for the clarification. Once again, I'll call on Counselor Waters and see what he has to say on this.
I'm probably not going to shed much light on anything. But it would be helpful for me, not, Lisa, if you have some if-then sequence, Councilmember Martin made reference to kind of reevaluating our funding priorities. I think I know where that would go in terms of what we would see as budget proposals in the run-up to the 20, in 2024, both in terms of capital improvement, or the capital improvement budget and operation budget. And I can, you know, I can, I can speculate what, what we would see, but it would be helpful for me to hear from you, if you did X, Y, and Z, then, from the staff perspective, we would, we think it would model this way, right? If you have expectations, because also the statement made that, that the staff would aspire to see us set different goals. I would imagine there is an if, if that's the case, there's an if-then sequence in there somewhere, because you're not going to want us to see us set more aggressive goals without making some other adjustments in terms of the inputs, right? In terms of funding or staffing or whatever. So, I wouldn't know how to answer the question. You asked for direction. I don't know how to give any other direction with what we've been provided without that, without if you do X, then we could expect Y, and we would recommend or like to see X, right? In the absence of that, you've worked real hard on this. We've been with this for a while. I don't know what other, what other give, direction to give, other than what would be a, not even a swag for me. It would just be a wag, right? So, if there's an if-then sequence, it'd be helpful. I don't know if anybody else would, would benefit from that in order to make, in order to answer your question about different goals.
I, I actually agree with that, too. So, before we even talk about the goals and whether they should change, or, let's get the feedback that Counselor Waters. How do we get there? And if we do, what will it cost us to do that? So, for me, and let's go back, then, let's look at the right side of this grid. Do we, is there, do we want to stick with this until we get more information back on the budgeting and the goals? Counselor McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Well, the only reason why I thought we should stick with it is, is that we didn't have all that information. We said that we would get some more detail at our retreat, and so I felt that it would be maybe a little premature to go ahead and try to start changing the field goals on this, at this point here, when I don't know what the effect would be. There's, there's so many different levels of effect here that, that are at play, that I'm concerned that, you know, what would happen. So, I, I would like to know what, what that might look like, and, and there's no free lunch, so we know that there's going to be some costs associated with this. So, it's, it's, it's something, and if there's no, and it's not just financial costs, but it might be also, you know, all this is lost in a sense of political loss, so, of trying to move in this direction. When we're the one of two cities that got an A, I would think that we're probably on a fairly decent track. I don't think that we're going to start missing assignments. Thank you.
So, Counselor Martin, you've talked twice on this, so we need to give her direction. So, I'm calling you one more time.
I've been hearing Councilmember Waters and Councilmember McCoy, essentially, I believe that the sustainability staff is asking for direction to do more modeling, to see what could happen and reset the goals, and the council is reacting as though we are being asked to set new targets right now, knowing nothing more than is known today. That 66% in 2050 is from a 2018 evaluation, I believe. It was 66% in the old Lotus Report that I read when I was first elected. So, I, I think that it is, I, I still think that there is a misunderstanding going on about the process. The sustainability organization, in order to do its job, needs direction from council to do more modeling. It may not be more modeling tomorrow. It may be more modeling after the next PRPA report, but sticking with, sticking with these 2018 goals with all of the changes that have happened since is really hobbling the organization, and I, I really have a hard time understanding, I don't understand how anybody expects the sustainability organization to continue to do its job if they are not authorized by the council to, to look into more aggressive modeling.
So, I see we have both the city manager and Becky Doyle here to weigh in.
I think, too, if I can jump in, to take what I've heard from different councilmembers, if this, then this, and what are the choices? What we could do is come in and take the modeling and say, "Here's what we showed you today, where you can see the, the movement. We have 69%. You can see where the blue category is coming in with the codes, and, and here's what this is going to entail." And then, we can come in and go, "If this, then this is what it's going to look like," and, and give council some slightly, some more information in terms of looking at what that future target's going to be, so you all can get a greater comfort level of saying, "Yes, we think this is where we want to be," based on what we're presenting out of the modeling information, which would mean, you don't necessarily have to say it today to go, "We want to move to 100,"
Right.
But go back, do some modeling, bring those options back to us. Let us know what that's going to entail and, and what changes that will really require when you look out in that window from 2030 to 2050. And, and we can do that. And that's not saying there needs to be a decision, and in that, I think we will answer the if-then, because it'll give you a clearer sense of, in order to move to that 100% level, this is what we're going to have to do. And if council wants, we can go back and do that modeling and then bring it back to you as part of a broader conversation. Doesn't mean you have to give the answer today of, "Yes, we want to move to 100. We'll just show you what that's going to look like."
Great. Becky, did you want to weigh in?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If I could just add that I, I would encourage us to think about this as an aspirational target.
Right.
Very much like when we talked about zero waste, that this is a direction that we want to go, and that science-based interim target that's really based on activities that are underway is, you know, our, our existing goal within our planning horizon. But then, you know, what, what do we want to see out beyond that horizon? What's our, what's our eventual vision for how the city operates?
And you said that much better, which was why I was trying to say that as we move forward, these goals will change, hopefully, and with the modeling. So, do we all agree that we would like staff to bring back the modeling? So, can I have a, get a head shake?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. That is the direction we would like to go. Are you clear with that direction?
Yeah. Thank you, member, or Mayor Peck and members of council. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. We appreciate yours.
And now, I can't figure out how to get out of this. Keep going. Keep going.
Now, we have our legislative bill update with Assistant City Manager Sandy Cedar.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. We have three bills for you to consider today. The first one, Senate Bill 23111, Concerning Public Employees Workplace Protection. It sounds like a good concept. I certainly think most people believe that public employees should be protected, but this particular bill actually creates some real problems for home rural municipalities. What it does is it gives rights and dictates how specific HR and collective bargaining agreements will work for public employees, which actually violates our charter, as well as would violate our current collective bargaining agreements. So, while we certainly appreciate the thoughts around it, most of these things are things that we do today already to protect public employees, and this is a pretty big overreach from the state, really against home rural municipalities and our charter. So, even though it sounds like a good idea as a bill, staff recommends city council opposes Senate Bill 23111 so that we can preserve your right to determine as an employer what kinds of things you will provide to your employees, as well as the community to determine what things get added to their charter, such as collective bargaining agreements, et cetera.
Move your vote, 23111.
So, it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez, seconded by Counselor McCoy to oppose 23111. Let's vote. Let's vote. So that carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor. The second bill is Senate Bill 23166, concerning establishment of a wildfire resiliency code board. So again, this is an idea that I think certainly people think on the face looks like a good idea, to create codes, a board from the state side that would really help create resiliency around that urban interface with wildfires. But a state code board certainly is exactly against home rural municipalities. And while we would certainly love some suggestions from the state, or if they're willing to bring expertise on what that looks like for our codes, that's one thing, but to determine what codes we would institute as part of that urban interface is not appropriate. So we are requesting the city council opposes 23166.
Can I have a motion? So that motion to oppose 23166 was made by Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez, seconded by Counselor Waters. Let's vote. And that carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor. On a little bit of a more supportive note, Senate Bill 23175 is legislation that would allow you to continue your current downtown development authority in increments of 20 years unless the city council decided that they would like to stop that practice. Obviously, our Longmont Downtown Development Authority does amazing work, and to be able to continue their funding, you know, as, as this work continues, I think is just an amazing gift to the residents of Longmont. So staff recommends that you support Senate Bill 23175.
I have a question on that. You can move it in just a moment. Go ahead, make the motion. So it's been moved to support by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Hidalgo Ferring. I do have a question. So if we, as a home rural city, wanted to up this to 30 years for any reason, can we do that?
The way that it's set right now is that after the first 20 years, there's a 30-year extension, and now this would allow for additional 20-year extensions. So unfortunately, no, that's, the bill really is just talking about 20-year extensions, kind of in perpetuity, until the council were to decide otherwise.
Okay, great.
So I, I think the answer is if, once you hit the first 20-year extension, if council wanted to do it again, you could do it again. And there's not a limitation where it just ends.
Okay.
The, the first one is 30 years, the second one is 20 years.
Okay, great. So let's vote. Oh, Counselor, I mean, sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. No? I meant to call on you, but it's, oh, go ahead.
So, thank you. So Sandy, I do have a question on, as to when, I saw that it's, it's been introduced. So typically, when we put in our, our proposals to support or oppose, is it prior to its introduction or after it's already been introduced?
Yes, Mayor Peck, Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring, our policy, the policy that the city council set a few years ago, was that we try to catch it as fast as possible before committee. So the, the previous council or a couple councils ago actually wanted to wait till after committee. But in this case, the way that we do it is as soon as it's introduced and we have that feedback, we try to get it in front of council so that we can lobby legislators for a longer period of time.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
And then do you know what the next course of action would be? Where, where, when is it going to committee?
I don't believe it's been calendared yet. It literally dropped on Thursday afternoon.
Got it, okay. Well, that's pretty fast.
I caught it on Friday from my review.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It would, it would go to its committee, probably local affairs would be my guess. And then, you know, we'll, we'll take it from there.
Great, thank you.
Now it's Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. They're not here, and I've not heard them speak at city council, but I do know, and having had some conversations, that the LDDA is supportive of this legislation.
Yep.
So I just wanted to make that noted.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. And Kimberly McKee shared that with me as well, so thank you.
Great. So I think that we're ready to vote. And that carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Strider, I see you.
Yes, Strider Benston, 95117. I really appreciate all the work that's been done on this, and I think the discussion dealing with it is good. I've got a couple of basic questions, which probably won't be up tonight, but maybe Saturday. Couple of things. One of the first times I ever spoke here about 16 years ago, I talked about having a grid system for buses for public transportation, and we still haven't moved anything in that direction. And also about maybe incrementally replacing the, the public fleet with electric vehicles. Now, battery technology has gotten so much better that it's vastly more possible now, but I haven't seen much move. I saw what, 1.4%, maybe going up to 4% soon. So I think those things ought to be looked into. With the grid bus system, you could have smaller buses, and people could know where they're going to and go somewhere, instead of just having two that go all around and you have to know exactly where you're going. If you're not going there, you can't get there. So that's part of it. I wonder about some of the stuff was going good and then flatlining, and I'm not sure why. And I, I, I don't know what that's all about. Transportation, for example, is some of that dependent on getting more electric gas stations, electric stations, or presuming that they're going to come? What if the political national thing is, no, we don't want that kind of stuff. Let's just burn down all the forests like Bolsonaro in Brazil? So that's one factor I think could be addressed this weekend. And are we presuming a steady scientific, scientific advance on all of these things like battery technology? Or, you know, science never advances steadily. Do we have contingencies for going faster if it gets better? Or, or how do we deal with it if it gets slower? Those kinds of things ought to be taken into consideration. And one of them, like building electrification, it's like nothing and then pretty good. Why not, why not something now? I mean, is that only new buildings? Or what about electrifying better the ones we already have? So just some basic things to, to look into. And keep in mind, Limits to Growth by Du Bois and Ward about 1976. You know, we run out of everything. Well, find more copper, dig it.
Thank you, Strider. Before you move, Strider. For the fleet, you can talk to Chase, he's behind you, about your answers to the fleet. For, I can talk to you about transportation. And I'm sure that Lisa Knoblock would be glad to explain some of the questions you had about, about the presentation she just gave in the flatlining. So we can, we can answer those.
Thank you. I think the bicycle path things have really improved greatly, even though I still mostly am on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're at mayor and council comments. Are there any comments that councillors would like to make? Counselor Martin?
Well, I'd like to answer Strider's questions now. I think that, that the transit numbers were, were mainly based on a 2018 rate of electric vehicle adoption, with, with few improvements in public transit sort of rolled into that mix. I think Lisa Knoblock mentioned in her presentation that alternatives in public transit could yield considerable gains. I, I think perhaps just the, the council did not hear it. Beneficial building electrification is another situation that's, that's kind of the same in the sense that in 2018, we weren't really taking heat pumps very seriously, because there hadn't been technological improvements in heat pumps since the 70s, when, you know, they first were viable for any reason, any place. And now, within the last few years, as it's been known we were going to need them, they're a lot better. And so we actually, the city is making plans to promote the transition to heat pumps considerably faster, and that you would see the, the, the space even before 2030 improve if the staff is allowed to do additional modeling. And that's why I was really upset about the idea that they should be instructed to, to work from the old 2018 model. It just doesn't make sense. I don't really believe that that's what the council thought they were doing, but it was going to come out that way. So I, I congratulate you, Strider, for keeping up on things, because you hit the nail right on the head. Thanks.
Thank you.
So, okay, we're still at council comments. Thank you very much, Strider. Is there anybody else on council that would like to comment? I would like to give a shout out to Maica Unger for keeping us up on what CDPHE is doing. And I was very happy to read that the state is giving, I lost my train of thought, HEPA filter to the schools in Colorado, especially in our county. I'm very happy about that. So any other comments? No. With that, I would like, we're going to go to the city manager remarks. Harold?
No comments, Mayor, council.
City Attorney?
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn? So it's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Hidalgo Ferring to adjourn. Let's vote. All those in favor? Thank you, we are adjourned.